Thank you. So we are already in open session because we did that earlier. So we're going to continue with the regular agenda of the Cohasset School Committee on Wednesday, December 5th, 2018. As a reminder, all school committee meetings are televised and recorded. And I do have a request to make of the committee that we move one of these items to the beginning of the agenda. So do I have a motion to walk to read between the Pledge of Allegiance and public statement?
So would.
Do you have a s-? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So for those who would like to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would also, it's not on the agenda, but I would like to ask for a moment of silence for our 41st president, George H. Jeffrey Bush. Thank you. So we'll thank you. As you know, the last few years, we've had a focus on literacy, particularly in pre-K, actually pre-K to grade five. And this year, we've had the fruits of that labor, and we have an initiative called Walk to Read. I was familiar with that in a prior district and its success. And I asked that the Osgood teachers accompany Lisa today to talk about how that's coming and its history of the last few weeks and all of the hard work they've done. It includes taking data from every single child and analyzing it, grouping it, check, keeping very strict tabs on their progress. I have to say that in my prior district, when this was initiated, the fourth grade in my last district was number one in the state for MCAS and ELA. So I've seen the fruits of that great data and movement, and I have yet to go there and see this in action, but I can't wait. So Lisa, if you would introduce and bring forward all these great people.
Would you like me to have all of us move up or?
Yes.
Okay.
And please bring Echo.
Echo.
Echo wants to be in the hearing.
Just slide your chair, please. As you know, we've put in, and Barbara is starting to, we have, I don't know if she's doing any of the foundations, so which is also.
Great.
It is a publication of Wilson, which we also use in all of our special education centers. So you're on.
All right. Thank you, and thank you very much for putting us on the agenda. We appreciate it. So this evening, I have with me, I'm Russell Crowe, principal of the Osgood. I have with me Liz Dineger, the reading specialist at the Osgood. She was a teacher where two for the last two years, and where Alex went over to the Deer Hill. Liz is now our reading specialist and doing a fabulous job. I have second grade teacher Jen Nick Phillips with us. Jen has been first grade and second grade. This is her second grade teacher. Gina Stiles, our first grade teacher representative. And what we'd like to share with you are some of the great things that are going on in literacy at the Osgood, which is kind of.
Don't get Cassie.
Oh gee. Just wave me at her. And we have Cassie O'Brien, technology integrational specialist with us. I'm so sorry.
Who blushes very well.
Yeah. And now I've just sent her off the edge. Sorry about that. Excuse me. So we just want to give you a little bit of insight as to what we're doing in literacy, where we're going. We began this process two years ago when I first got hired to head up the literacy committee and see how pre-K through five, our literacy is. This is what I'm presenting with the group this evening, and they're actually taking the lead on it, is just where we are at the Osgood right now. So I'm not neglecting the Deer Hill, but we've done some initiatives at the Osgood that we are very proud of, and we're working very hard, which will then follow through to the students as they go to Deer Hill. So, are we ready? All right. You want me to move your phone down?
Yep.
Okay. So one of the first things that we wanted to tell you about, and we thank you to the school committee, thank you to Dr. Sullivan, and thank you to Mrs. Davis. We appreciate all the support that you gave us with the foundations. Foundations is a whole class systematic, multi-sensory approach to literacy. It is the foundation, fund in the word, that gives you that core of what we need in kindergarten, first and second grade, just learning all of the sounds, phonemic awareness, awenix, sorry, and phonics. The scope and sequence focuses on phonemic rules and patterns. Thirty minutes each day is in every classroom. One and two kindergarten will start in January, is focused on this program where it's scripted. The teacher gives the lesson with echo.
This is baby echo, and then this is echo. So this baby echo is one that the kids can use, and echo is an owl that you echo back as the teacher gives the sound. The students then echo back what the teacher says, so that there's the explicit instruction of what they're looking for them to do. So I can keep going if you want. All right. So I'll just go to the next slide, just to show you. It talks about all of the five key components for literacy. It talks about phonemic awareness, where they're talking about how to segment words, how to find the patterns in words, play with words, and then we're really explicitly teaching the phonics rules for reading, decoding, and spelling and coding, so that students, every student, not just people who are getting extra support, every student in the classroom is getting the rules for the foundations of reading and writing. And so within that also, they have high frequency words, which are words that don't follow patterns, or there are words that are just often in books that students need to learn those words before they learn the rule, because they need to know it for reading books, right? And they come up very frequently. So there's different strategies that foundations uses with using multi-sensory ways to teach these words, and it's, everything that they do in foundations is multi-sensory. It's talking about how to connect the different ways you learn through practicing it and reading it, writing it, and saying it, and using your whole body to learn it. It goes into reading fluency, and it's using controlled texts with the sight words they should know, with the patterns that they've been taught, so that they're getting the instruction of fluency on words that are appropriate for them at that point in the curriculum. And it continues on, it talks about vocabulary of words that they can read and spell. So it's giving you words that they would see and talking about what the meaning of those words are, so that when they are looking at new words, they're also thinking about the meaning of these words. And as it gets up into the upper grades, it starts to talk about word parts and how prefixes and suffixes change the meaning of the words, and it talks about all of the different ways the words can be manipulated, and you know, talking about nouns, verbs, how it's being used, and how you change a word depending on where it is in the sentence. The comprehension strategies that are there with foundations will also be tied into the current curriculum of Reading Street that already is being used in the classroom, so that those two programs will be integrated together. Spelling is shifting a little bit from memorizing lists of words to really truly knowing the skill of the rule. And so there will not be sent home spelling lists of ten, fifteen words for students to practice, memorize, forget next week. So it's really that they're expected to know. And one of the one things that I truly love about the program is that when you get to a student, you teach them the skill, you are then expecting them to know the skill, own it, and tell it back to you. And that's the big difference, that rather than spelling and memorizing, they're really owning the word, and they're owning the skill, so that it then carries into the next skill, and they're building upon that. And we all at Osgood continue to love Handwriting Without Tears. We were just having a conversation about it with some eighth graders. You know, and that will continue into it. We'll be using the terminology from Handwriting Without Tears to help build the formation. Like I said, it's a multi-sensory, so we will be doing the practice of the writing instruction explicitly with how to write the letter, what the letter says, and then using it in a sentence or a word, moving on. So it, like Lisa had mentioned, it is daily, every single day. It's not a Monday to Friday program. It's a day one, it's a day two, day three, day four, until it gets to the unit test. And that unit test is really based on what your students need. Every day, there is about three to five different activities, from using baby echo for the sound cards, A, Apple, Ab, Bebba, or going on to, here are sight word flash cards, or I want you to write your sight words, or going on to some fluency activities, building words, building nonsense words. So every day, there's three to five activities that are rote activities. Every teacher at Osgood will be following what it says in the book. So every classroom is getting the same three to five activities on a certain day. Now, that might not say that Mrs. Steele's classroom and Mrs. Gibson's classroom are on the same day, because they have a different group of students, so that they'll be looking at what those students need for that day. And it's five days a week, so that means that on those half-days, we're still getting phonics in every single day. When students are ready to move on, you need to have an eighty percent pass of the unit test. Eighty percent of your students need to have eighty percent, or eighty percent on the test in order for you to move to the next unit. So we're not just forgetting those kids. We're still bringing those old skills back. For those twenty percent, we'll just do small groups. They might be working with me, they'll be working with the classroom teacher. You know, they'll be reinforced in a different way, but the whole class will continue on with that eighty percent that's there. And so we're really excited about it. We love baby echo. Great.
One thing that I did want to mention was, as I had said before, we're very fortunate that we had the foundations training. A few teachers went over the summer, and then in October, we had the teachers that weren't able to go during the summer, were trained at the Osgood by the specialists coming out.
So thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. And we've had individual time for teachers to get together and just kind of get going and implement it, so that's been absolutely huge.
I also want to say that work that Handwriting Without Tears came from the teachers themselves, and this did as well, so much of it is owned from that. I think my first few months here, I think it was the kindergarten teachers who said, you know what, we need a handwriting, and it's very expensive, and we said, we'll get it done. And we did, so it's a support of the community and the school committee as well. And we have typing, keyboarding without tears as well. So, you know, if you walk through the schools, your children will say, oh, all letters start at the top. Definitely, they've really encompassed that whole belief.
And our Daily Five, Jen will be talking about Daily Five.
So Daily Five is something that has been at the Osgood for several years now. It is used in K one and two, and it's definitely an approach to teaching reading and writing in a more authentic way with your students. And we spend the first, I would say, six to eight weeks showing our students how to sustain their stamina and sustained engagement and effort, even when their bodies and brains get tired, but to do something very meaningful, very rigorous, and very relevant, so that I or all of my colleagues can have time, very intimate time with our readers, and differentiate our groups, knowing that our students can work very independently in meaningful literacy stations. And so we teach them, what does our room look like when you travel to literacy stations, which are read to self, read to someone, work on writing, listen to reading, and word work. And during those times that those students travel there, for instance, if they're going to read to self, they have a level differentiated book bag that meets their independent reading level, and they sustain stamina for twenty minutes of reading time for themselves, as I sit with a group of small group readers and teach them at their independent and instructional level. If they visit read to someone, they're partnered with another reader at their independent reading level, and they sit and become reading coaches, and they offer their support to each other as readers. They talk about the text they're reading, they check for understanding, and they might do some reading, written responses to the text that they're reading. When they travel to work on writing, again, we partner with Empowering Writers, which is our writing curriculum. We look for authentic ways for them to write during that time with other writers. Listen to reading, they're using our iPads that Cassie has very nicely uploaded wonderful apps where they can listen to readers read to them, they can follow along and answer comprehension, little quizzes as they read. There's reading RASP kids that they do, again, where it's differentiated text that they're reading, and then they can take comprehension, little quizzes on that as well. Word work is an opportunity for them to make and build words, and we match it to the phonics skill or the phonemic awareness skill that comes from our foundations program this year. And again, what we're hoping is that these kindergarteners, first graders, and second graders are independently doing these stations, which allows the teachers to intimately meet with their readers. And through a lot of explicit modeling and talking and discussions and chats, they build their stamina to do that independently. And we do that, what we like to call them is rounds. So I teach a mini lesson, whether it be a foundations lesson, it could be a Reading Street lesson, it could be a literacy comprehension discussion, and then they break into their literacy station for a certain amount of time, and then we regroup. So you talked about everything, we just want to show you just some examples of Daily Five going on in the classrooms. It certainly gives them an ownership of what they're learning and the process of their learning and choosing what they like to do, that's very meaningful in their literacy stations, as I have that intimate time with my readers.
So Walk to Read, this year we started, it's twice a week. It's grade one and two, for thirty minutes, every student in those grades. So grade one goes from nine-thirty to ten on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and in second grade, they go from ten-fifteen to ten-forty-five. Every student in grades one and in grade two will travel to a certain group that is matching what those students need at that time. The teachers have just recently finished our second round of conversations, and so tomorrow is our first day of round two for Walk to Read. We've had more time to get to know the students now that we're in November, well, it was in November, and we've had our DRA assessments done, so we have another piece of assessments that we use to talk about this. We use, we do some FRI reading assessments to see what they do, and also our foundations assessments. So we sit and we have a conversation about our students, what are our concerns. We sort of create different groups based on what we have noticed in our small reading groups, or in whole class conversations, and then we see how many kids are needing similar skills. So we had an accuracy group, we had multiple strategies to decode's group, we had comprehension groups. We had kids who really just want the pure enjoyment of book clubs, and really getting into a book, like an adult book club type thing. We had some students who really need to actually work on some listening comprehension, because they do so much phonics, they need to work on their comprehension skills. So we have rearranged all of those groups that we had before, and they will walk to a different classroom. And so the way we divide it up is each teacher is in their classroom, and then we have some ESPs who are involved with this. We have myself, Cassie is taking a brief, and taking it into literacy and technology this round. Marcia Cantel, who's our math specialist, is doing literacy and math this round. So we really pull a lot of teachers in to get the kids engaged, and so we're working on what those kids need for skill at that time.
You also have junior grade books.
And we have, actually, yes, and so we have Leslie Divney, our librarian, and Beck Collier, who is another ESP technology teacher, is going, leads our junior grade books, who were trained years ago, I don't know how long ago. So we have five, okay, thank you, before me. So we have a lot of people involved who are doing our Walk to Read with us, which has been really exciting, because there's just a buzz. People are getting to see students from their classroom, but also in other classrooms. It really sort of changes up our day-to-day. Kids are excited to be with friends they don't normally get to be with all day long. And we have so many skills across our staff that are now we're being able to tap into. So those are the people involved.
Okay, so the grouping process we talked about just a little bit is, the teachers, as Liz had said, get together and they form the group, so five or six classroom teachers, if you're talking about first grade or second grade. They sit down with Liz, myself, and they just look at all the lists of their children, all of the assessments that they've taken. For example, groups are created using data from Divels DRA assessments, as well as classroom observations. Last week, we had our meeting where the teachers all got together, and literally, it was very exciting. Oh, it was very exciting for me, I don't know about anybody else, but it was exciting because we had six teachers sitting in a room, they had the data, the information about their students, and I would show you a picture of it, but there would be names attached, and I don't want to do that. So that was playing up on the screen, and we were moving kids. Okay, well, yeah, they're really good in this, but wow, it would be really great if we can move them, give them, let's push them just a little bit and put them into the junior grade books group. I believe we even came up in second grade with another group, name for another group, because it was me. So that owl was really exciting to see, because it was not only just, okay, well, here are the students here, we're going to place them, it was people thinking about what would be best for the students. In my eyes, that's what a data meeting should be, and that's why we do the Divels, that's why we do the DRA, we want to make sure we're using that information. And during the data meeting, the focus for the group's instruction for the next six to eight weeks, so as Liz said, tomorrow is our first kickoff day for the second set, and that will go to the beginning of February. And for six to eight weeks, it's identified, and the teachers then are assigned their groups, and off you go. And the other exciting part is, excuse me, on those days when we have Walk to Read, our little ones don't travel by themselves much, they don't get much freedom to travel by themselves, they can't get lost in the building, but we don't let them travel much. During this half-hour period, twice a week, they march right to where they're going, they go in the classroom, they sit down, and it's kind of exciting, just to see the independence that they feel.
I'm benefits, and I think, I feel like we definitely, Liz and Lisa definitely already talked about these, but they definitely do gain the independence to walk the halls of the Osgood very responsibly and respectfully, and I think it makes them feel mature to do that. And Walk to Read varies the daily routine by working with new teachers and a mixture of students, that they're very well-matched across the grade level, and it's a great opportunity to be, to build some really nice peer relationships and see our old friends from the past that we wish we could be together again as readers. And I also think that, talking about the six to eight weeks, we read the temperature of our groups, and we say, is this the perfect fit? Is this the just right fit for you? And if it's not, we make sure we make adjustments, and we come back together in some collegial collaboration to say, I think this might not be the right fit, I think this child needs this, or this reader needs that. So I like that we can constantly have a gauge on what our readers need at any given time. So there's definitely a lot of benefits.
And I would also say, they've got that brain break, which they needed to move, which we're always looking for. So my group was a wonderful group to get together to talk about some higher-level comprehension skills. I did something with this group, I got this great idea from a friend of mine to create an owl sort of reading group. We picked six books that were very, very different, with one exception, they all had one theme, which was color. They had something to do with color in each book. Every time we got a new book to read, we would make an observation statement or two, just by looking at the cover, by looking at the title. We would make wonder statements, things we hoped we might learn, what we might question about what we were seeing. We would make links with our book after we finished reading it, links with our world, links with other things we had read. We call this text-to-text connections, text-to-self connections. But every book also had the S, which was the sparkling vocabulary. And this is really where things got meaty for the children. We were able to really heighten their vocabulary. We would do a little bit of a word study, we'd take these words, break them apart, work on their syllables, consonants, vowels, the parts of speech, really allow the children to think higher level with these words. They were learning the meaning of the words, they were using these words in sentences, they were keeping their own little vocabulary log, they were doing some sketching with the words. But again, we know that children need repeated exposure to really internalize that meaning. So this was a wonderful opportunity for me to ask Cassie to come in and for us to partner together and use technology in a very meaningful way, and have the children, once again, have an opportunity to either create a sentence with one of their sparkling vocabulary words, or speak to a little video clip with one of the words. So Cassie and I did different things. This slide that Cassie's pulling up right now was one of the things we did, it's a Padlet tool.
This was, oh, sorry, please. So Padlet is an online tool for collaboration. This was the beginning stages. Ideally, it would be nice if the students could be on a device, you know, just typing the word, typing a meaning, pardon the sentence, but at this point, we just sort of had them come up, but they could see how all of their work went up together to create, you know, something for that vocabulary word. So that's just an example of one collecting information.
So we go up to see Mrs. O'Brien, give her their word, give her their own work, sort of their own voice about what this word meant for them, or how they would use it in the sentence, and letting them see it appear on the screen right in front of them as they worked. I just think it gave that sort of, they were seeing it, they were hearing themselves. It was really great ownership for them.
And so then, at the end, we did a collaboration of groups of two, got a specific vocabulary of something else. I was like, so we got it structurally. So basically.
This is a nice recap at the end. Each, the group of thirteen was there together, and they were reminded of all the different material we read, they were reminded of their vocabulary words, they had their nice little vocabulary logs, and they were able to go back and reflect on their learning as a way to sort of wrap up our Walk to Read group. So this is just two of, two video clips, two of many, so this is just four of the thirteen students I worked with.
And Seesaw is an online tool.
This is what? A masterpiece is a work of the, our sparkling vocabulary, sparkling vocabulary only is a masterpiece.
A masterpiece means a work of the highest quality.
A masterpiece is a really good paper. Our work.
So they just sort of collected their.
What did I do?
Our book is the Color Monster.
Our sparkling vocabulary word is emotions.
Emotions mean different feelings that you can make.
My favorite emotions are happy, love, and calm.
And they did not practice whatsoever, this was completely unscripted, this was just sort of, you know, the children being, their authentic selves, and it was, they loved watching this back afterwards and seeing their peers.
Sorry, go to the next slide.
It was nice that we wrapped up our session with this. They really, they really felt, I think, proud of each other. They were so cute, they were like, oh, you're doing such a good job. So it was a really nice way, I think they really felt empowered and really proud.
So I, I'll just go through these quickly, I don't want to take too much time. So these, here's some more ways we've been integrating technology in literacy. This is a few images from preschool, different kinds of, on the top left is watching a Discovery Education video on different types of communities using social studies standards. The next one is listening to online stories, much to the Daylight, like you were mentioning, Jen. And we have the Handwriting Without Tears Wet-Dry-Try app. And the bottom one is some rhyming games. So this is Seesaw again, it's a really great online cross-purcellar tool where students kind of own the learning. It was originally created for a student portfolio, where they can add an image, text, audio, and we used it with some first graders last year for some descriptive writing. And this was another, actually, first grade activity, where the students were learning types of sentences, they made an observation, and they wrote a statement about the image, and then they got to record themselves, asking a question about the image. This is Padlet again, which Gina and I used, but in this case, the students sat at the computers after listening to a story, and they all got to contribute a block to the Padlet, and so they could all see that, you know, they were collaborating, you know, SD standards, communicating with each other and seeing each other's work.
It's okay.
So here is another story creating tool called Beltboard for kindergarten, but I would like to see if first grade would be interested in it as well. They add different shapes, they can add text, letters, and record themselves telling a story, be telling a story, parts of a story. The QR readers on the iPads have been really important for this age group to quickly access an online tool, so they're not trying to access a website and a link, they can just scan it and go right to whatever tools they're needing. This has been for Daily Five, Jen, I think many people are using this for morning meeting. The MIMIO Interactive whiteboard used for not just that, but all areas of. Um, the MIMIO Interactive whiteboard used for not just that, but all areas of, handwriting without tears as well. This is Epic, the one Jen was referring to. The students can listen to an audio story, have it read to them. And like a little highlighted block will follow along the words that they're reading. Um, very popular. Um, and Liz, this is the way you used Poplet, which is an online cross-prickler tool where students are web diagramming, showing relationships between ideas. And you use it as a daily pocket activity.
It was a choice activity during Walk, during, uh, Wordwork or writing about what you were reading.
Um, this is a great, um, app called John Tell in kindergarten. Again, they're building a story. Um, the teacher incorporated STEM standards and the students, kindergarten or, yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry.
Thank you.
The, yeah, I said, attacked the little tiny ants. Oh no, where are we going?
So they can move the objects around in the story, which is very convenient.
The, yeah, I said, attacked the little tiny ant.
Okay, so this is our V-Bots, decoding, um, which you can put any, it's cross-prickler again. You can put any content under those squares. Um, and you have a machine that you program that you see up on the right. You know, forward, back, it's our code this month anyway. So it's also another really learning time. But, um, the students are learning some so- social study standards and, um, you know, the compass rows and locating states. We, we can't see it at the bottom, but it was Leroux across America. So the kids had a lot of fun going to different states. And so, yeah.
Okay, very. Um, thank you very much for having us come this evening. And if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. One of the big things that, um, I wanted to do is thank the entire staff at the Osgood. It has been quite a ride just getting us all together and making sure that we all understand and want to do this. And I can't thank them enough for being so flexible and, um, just open to this. Just for parents to know, um, we're going to have a Let's Talk Literacy at the Osgood. So parents at the Osgood can come in and they can experience, um, e- evening time, what we're talking about. Maybe we'll do a lesson with, um, Echo and just Walk to Read and whatnot. So just trying to get the information out there as to what we're doing in literacy and how it's going. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is a public statement. And at our last meeting, we agreed that we would have a statement for the public, for the community, on what's been going on in the district to the best of our ability. In response to recent questions and comments about the relevant law governing public employee discipline before issuing a notice of intent to dismiss under Mass General Laws, Chapter seventy-one, Section forty-one or Section forty-two, a district must conduct an investigation that is statu- and is statutorily required and often contractually required to provide teachers and other employees with due process. A district has the burden of proof and arbitration to establish good cause for terminating a principal, Section one forty-one, and just cause for terminating a teacher, Section forty-two. A district is held to evidentiary standards that preclude reliance on rumor, innuendo, half-truths, allegations, hearsay, or gossip. A school district can only act on established facts. The filing of a criminal charge does not prove a case. Similarly, the existence of a DCF determination that reasonable cause exists to establish abuse or neglect is very likely insufficient alone to sustain the district's burden of proof at a termination arbitration. When facts are disputed and no witnesses have corroborated one account over the other, it is difficult to prove the facts of a case to the satisfaction of an arbitrator. When an arbitrator overturns a dismissal, the remedy most often includes an order to reinstate the employee and an award of back pay. When determining a course of action on a personnel matter involving students as victims or witnesses, the district ordinarily considers the following factors, among others: student safety and well-being, promotion of a positive and healthy academic environment, the burden on students who are called to testify, whether facts are in dispute, whether there are witnesses who corroborate one version of events over another, whether the issue presented is central to the district's mission, the likelihood of success should an employee challenge a personnel decision at arbitration, the financial and institutional costs of defending a termination or other personnel decision, and uncertainty, uncertainty of result when taking a case to arbitration versus the certainty of arranging agreed-upon terms of separation. In the ordinary course, when a matter is in the hands of police and DCF, these entities routinely instruct school officials to suspend or delay any internal school-based investigations into the same issues or events pending the outcome of ongoing law enforcement and DCF investigations. This is done to avoid any potential interference with such investigations and to preserve the integrity of the law enforcement and DCF processes. Legal authorities do not want witnesses repeatedly interviewed, a process which can lead to contradictory or inconsistent witness statements and can often render a person's recall of an event unreliable. This means schools often cannot take action until law enforcement and/or DCF complete their work. It may sometimes appear like the district has not aggressively pursued resolution of personnel actions against employees. The conditions described above would suggest otherwise. Just because the district has not been discussing all of its work publicly does not mean that steps are not being taken. There is also a misconception that the district is concealing information. Rather, we have taken steps to ensure we do not compromise law enforcement and DCF investigations by disclosing the facts as we know them. In addition, generally and for good reasons, we do not comment on personnel matters or matters involving student privacy. While it may be easier to publicly release all information in the district's possession, we cannot do so without the written permission of involved students, involved teachers, and involved administrators without breaching the privacy of the individuals involved and potentially compromising ongoing investigations. Please know that all the information concerned, parents and citizens have brought forward, is being reviewed, considered, and vetted. We have also requested investigative reports from the police and DCF. We have received some, but not all of the requested information. For example, we are awaiting a recently completed DCF fifty-one B report, which is the long-form record of the investigation, not merely the determination letter. We also await the completion of the investigation into all district reporting processes undertaken at the district's initiative, which is currently on hold pending completion of the Title IX investigation. At this time, we cannot comment on personnel matters raised in those investigations. There is a widely held assumption, excuse me, that people in different positions of authority had the same information at the same time. Neither the superintendent nor the school committee was aware that there was a reportable offense until after the matter was referred to the police in May of two thousand eighteen. The person who referred the matter to police in the first place was Carolyn Conley. This notification to police was not made in passing, as has been characterized in public. We also reiterate that neither Louise Debus nor Carolyn Conley hired Jeff Knight. Like all district employees, Mr. Knight underwent an initial and periodic query checks as well as a national fingerprint background check. The reports we received pursuant to these background checks showed no criminal justice system involvement at all. We have no information to indicate that any previous employer disclosed to Cohasset Public Schools any disciplinary issues regarding Jeffrey Knight's previous employment, either before or after he was hired here. Jeff Knight tendered his resignation to the district before the November nineteenth DCF determination and before he appeared in court on November twenty-eighth. Whether or not he will receive post-employment benefits is not up to the school system. A person's eligibility for a retirement pension is determined by the Massachusetts Teachers Retirement System. And that is the end of our public statement to the community. Um, if anyone has any public comment item that they would bring to our attention that does not relate to what has already been discussed, then I certainly will entertain that. But we're not going to have back and forth about the facts that are in this because these are the facts. Yes?
So...
Name and address, please, for the record.
Mohammed Iran, Matthew Ledworth Farm Drive.
Yep.
So, um, the general conclusion is our kid, is our kids aren't really that, like, we have an image of kind of like, you know, that our kids are safe in the school system. But in reality, any teacher can take any kid, uh, and it becomes a he, he said, she said.
We're not going to have a conversation about this.
And, and we really...
We're not going to have a conversation about this.
And we don't have a support of the school committee to try to kind of have decide the parents whenever we get up more.
We are not going to go further with this conversation.
Thank you. You're the only one who doesn't want to go through this conversation.
All right, anything else that's different from what is already been? Yes? Name and address, please.
Patricia Gillis, four ninety-two Jerusalem Road. I have been a parent in this district since two thousand continuously. I'm a sixth grader. My son graduated three years ago, my other child graduated four years ago. I've sat through many meetings over many years here. I don't like the lynchmar mentality that I see on Facebook. I would bet that every single spouse of every administrator at Cohasset Public Schools, of the spouses of the school committee, the spouses of a lot of the teachers here are begging the, the people here who work here to retire, to resign. So if we keep going at this and attacking the people who work here, we're not going to get anywhere. I've been in the school system for eighteen years. I've seen a lot of changes and they're all positive. I've seen the superintendent bring forth trust and everything else and bring the school system back. And I see a lot of people here and on Facebook, hiding behind Facebook. It, it's a bullying lynchmar mentality and it has to stop.
We're not hiding on Facebook, we're here. And how, how about the parents of the child who was abused, especially, do, do they get a say in all this? Or, or do we just...
That's a question, it's criminal. It's not, but you're taking it out on the wrong people. I hope you all pull papers to run the school committee. If you're that passionate, I hope to vote for you in a, in a way.
Look, you haven't been to the last two or three school committees.
I have been laid up for six months with a traumatic injury.
Okay, that's, that's...
All I know is that the last two or three school committees, she, she has not been...
That's all we're going to move the agenda forward, please.
Run for the seat.
We're going to run, we're going to go forward with the agenda. This is a business meeting. It's not a public meeting. It's a meeting held in public. We have given you your say for four months. We're done with the conversation. The investigation is not finished. We're still waiting for results. Many of the, many of the statements that have been brought up in previous meetings are just unfounded, not correct. There is a lot of rumor and innuendo and we're going to move the meeting along. Thank you. No, no more public comment, I'm sorry.
No more questions?
Nope, no questions.
Of us, are we different?
Public comment is not for question and answer typically. But we have, we have recognized the fact that the commuter, the community is in pain and we have allowed it to happen. We're going back to the way it's supposed to be. And public comment is to bring up new items. You have three minutes. It's not a back and forth with the school committee.
So there's no...
If you have, if you have any more questions, you are more than welcome. Our, all of our email addresses are on the website. You're more than welcome to share your information with us. We have shared it with the law firms so that they can investigate your, your accusations or thoughts or things that are going around in the community. But we're not going to continue our meetings like this. We have a lot of business to conduct. And quite frankly, getting home from these meetings at midnight is not a lot of fun.
So we all work.
Yes, and I recognize that. So do we. So, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is approval of the warrant. Um, do I have a motion to approve the warrant nineteen dash oh nine S?
So moved.
You got a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call, please.
I, Walker.
I, Gina Stino.
I, Ellen Mark.
I, Jim Addis.
Next is the superintendent's report.
I'm very sorry that the audience is not here to hear the great accolades of John and Abigail Adams recipients of scholarships. Um, we have an incredible number of thirty-four students who have been awarded the John and Abigail Adams recipient scholarship for two thousand eighteen, nineteen. In order to receive this award, students must have either, must have an advanced proficient in either math and ELA in grade ten MCAS or in both. One of them must be advanced, the other can be proficient. Most of these students have had two, both math and ELA, advanced proficient in MCAS. And it awards them the tuition base for state school colleges. It's quite a prestigious award, quite an accomplishment. And Chair Astino has volunteered to read them.
There are thirty-four names on the list, which is amazing.
Yes.
Jessica Adley, Bradley Albanese, Nathaniel Arnold, Judith Barze, Olivia Buddington, Lily Burnett, Brendan Cooper, Nils Erlansson, Joseph Fox, Aaron Corio, George Rec, Jenna Herman, Michael Hill, Mae Humphrey, Aidan Kearns, Joseph Caneely, Rebecca Crystal, Margaret Lucier, Matthew Lucet, Scott Lucet, Turner Martell, Andrew McSheffrey, Thomas Olson, Rachel Regan, Marcus Roland, Cole Spear, Emma Stevens, Joseph Suzadel, Henry Thomas, Nathaniel Thomas, Anne Toomey, Holly Van Etten, Bridget Wickstead, and Elizabeth Sen. Congratulations to all of you.
Things are working hard.
I have to reiterate what the superintendent said. Through all of this controversy, we have not, we have not seen anything in the newspaper about the forty-seven National Honor Society honorees in this year's group. That is a, a record number of National Honor Society students. Thirty-four Adams Scholarship recipients. Um, one young man last week came and received the superintendent's award for high scholastic honors.
Young lady.
Oh, and yes, she wasn't present, I'm sorry. Um, we saw probably twenty, fifteen or twenty of ours.
Student athletes.
Student athletes who all had MIAA trophies in their hands. And I, I think that it's really sad that we have no news celebrating these student successes or our innovative, innovative teachers. It's, it's a sad day here. And I have to say, I'm calling you out, Abigail.
Um, if I, if I could make a comment, um, we've, at the Da Key House, have had through a very big change lately. Not only has Mary Ford retired, um...
I know.
But I would like to play a little further. Um, I've been under a lot of extra stress, um, myself, um, taking on family issues in addition to taking on lots of things that Mary Ford had to do that I now have to do.
Okay.
Um, so I would like to just say that I'm trying my best to cover as much as I can. There was a reason why I was not able to say it the last day. And it's not that I don't want to support you guys. Um, but I would just like to defend our paper and our coverage and say that we have been trying our best to cover it as fairly as possible. and say that we have been trying our best to cover it as fairly as possible.
If you could please bring my comments back to the management of the paper, though I would really be most appreciative.
Absolutely. And part of the issue is some of the things that were being sent to Mary are not getting to us. So we've been receiving things like, three weeks after it happened, they're like, I don't know what happened to this. Nobody's been doing anything. Can you please put this in the paper? So a lot of it's completely out of my control.
Can you please send the contact information to the superintendent for us?
The contact information is Cohasset@vivocable.com.
Oh, okay.
It's been public since she's retired.
Okay. Yes.
The other thing, Abigail, just so you know, last year when I was on the middle high school school council, it was talked a lot about how we promote, not just through the Mariner, because there were many other vehicles, but how do we promote the academic success and achievement of our, our students? And the parents on the council felt, everyone reads the Mariner online or hard copy. I still get the paper every Friday because I like the paper.
Me too. Oh, yeah.
So it, it was expressed la- last year with, with parents from the middle high school and celebrating the, the student academic achievements.
Well, I thought we were doing a, we were trying our best to do it. I mean, there is only so much I can cover.
Right.
I mean, I can only cover six to eight stories a week in a small community. I don't get overtime. So a lot of this stuff is, is actually taken on my own time that I do not get before. So just to acknowledge the fact that I, I am working very hard to cover this community and doing my very best to give this community the, the coverage that it deserves.
We appreciate that.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're happy week.
I do my best.
Yeah, absolutely. We appreciate that.
Sorry, I kind of hijacked the superintendent's report.
I want to thank Abigail for coming consistently.
Yeah.
She's been here with polls, blue and running out, so I do appreciate that. And I understand that the transition, I know it's difficult.
I'm very difficult. We're actually transitioning into another new building at the, in the new year, so it's been a very long transition for the entire...
It's even a physical transfer.
Yep.
Wow. Big, big news. We have the kindergarten enrollment and the preschool enrollment dates that we want families to have. They, they are available. They're going home, I'm sure. The first one you have is the kindergarten for nineteen and twenty. The first date, believe it or not, coming right up, January eighth, is the kindergarten information system. And I'm sure that Lisa will reach out to the preschools and to the community at large. We should post it on our website, but I also think that, I think last year we published it and in the Mariner.
Yeah, we did.
It's January, it's a Monday, and that's the information meeting on kindergarten session. The kindergarten registration opens the following week, on the sixteenth, at twelve noon only, nothing before. And if Judy were back, she'd say, you're eleven fifty-nine, you're not coming in. So...
Judy's watching.
And Judy's watching. God, we miss her. So if she's watching, we definitely do. And wish her well. The twelve, from twelve to three on Wednesday, and then on Thursday, the seventeenth, from eight AM to noon. So it accommodates the morning people as well as the afternoon. The lottery from that point should, we need one. We've not needed one for the last two years, but that doesn't mean that we don't. We do cap off our full day. We try to cap off at a hundred. Obviously, we don't build one class for one or two students, but we keep them within reason, and that is March first. And the kindergarten screening happens April eighth and ninth, and that is our dial. We use the dial to do some preliminary readiness, and those students who fall in the gray area are reevaluated the following fall. So there are, there are two opportunities for some, but some students are extremely ready very early, and we can count on them and know them and welcome them and do all of those things. The orientation is May twenty-third and the meet and greet in June, and then we welcome in with May stay and play in August. We're already looking at, like, nineteen, believe it or not. So that's kindergarten. And the preschool follows pretty closely. We have the lottery application. As you know, the preschool is an integrated preschool. It is, as in all districts, an opportunity to have role models along with children who exhibit special potential needs. So that we have a preschool lottery application in January second. They come first, the second week, so it's going to be a busy week. We complete the lottery for that on the first. That is Mary, you can and witness do the lottery. A new student lottery is held on Monday, and then again, we go all the way to January first of two thousand and twenty when it's the tuitions. So that will be, those are the two dates. They follow very closely to what we had last year, and it worked extremely well. We plan to follow that up as well.
And Abigail gets a copy of the packet, right? So she would have these timelines?
Yes, she has her, her personal.
Great.
We also have quite a thorough and complete report by Dr. Sullivan on the MCAS results. As you know, the MCAS for this year has changed dramatically, and what we have been, and Dr. Sullivan will reiterate, is that we have been told again and again not to compare our results from the new MCAS of two thousand eighteen to anything else. And I can judge that I'm incapable of doing that because it's very complex. So I hand it over to you. To say that we understand it thoroughly, it's again very difficult. It has other contributing factors that we do not qualify for. One of them being our ELL, the other being our, our different ethnic groups. We don't fit for some of the scoring. So, Dr. Sullivan, all yours.
All right. Well, I am honored to be presenting the MCAS results for two thousand eighteen. We're, there's many slides here. I'm going to move through some of them thoroughly. Some of them, the committee has the slides, have had them previous to this meeting, so I'll move quickly through some of them because they don't deserve as much explanation. The agenda is really in three parts, and what I'm going to do, just to keep this moving, is I'm going to take, I'm silly setting this up like it's a, you know, war and peace thing. It's law. Let's go through it.
It's about testing.
I'm going to take questions after each part, just to keep us moving along. The first part is an overview. We're going to look at next generation versus legacy MCAS. We're moving as a state in that regard. We're going to look at scoring reports that families receive and how to interpret them so that people watching at home can look back and see what the, what those results are really telling us. Perspectives on scores and what the state is telling us about the increased rigor in the next generation MCAS, then we'll take some questions. We're going to look at part two, which is the overall results. We're going to look at a comparison to the state with all of our students and our high need subgroup, and I'll explain what the high need subgroup is. Comparison to like districts, and I'm going to say it now, I'm going to say it throughout this. Our like districts are the cream of the crop. So we are in a dart, the dart tool, and we're, what we're looking at are really high performing schools. I just want to keep emphasizing that. So when you see us in comparison, and you'll see the blue line move to the top sometimes, to the middle sometimes, the percentage that is separating us are at times very small, and, and you'll see where the state is in those charts as well. And you can see that we're certainly doing well in that regard. And in some cases, when we're not achieving well, we'll look at our opportunities for growths as well as our strengths. We'll take another break and talk about it, and then we'll get to our accountability. The accountability system is in its first year under the new accountability measures. Last year, not that we weren't held accountable, but there were no level four and five districts. There aren't this year either, but there's a new accountability measure. There's been some added measures. I want to make sure I explain that and that you understand where accountability is coming from. And then we're going to look at action steps by subject and school. Okay? I'll take a deep breath and I'll begin. So to start off, just as an overview, just, just remember what the next generation MCAS is. It's an updated version of the nearly twenty-year-old MCAS assessments. I believe that when I came in, I started teaching in ninety-six, and I think that was the first MCAS to here. So I, I've never known anything but MCAS, but sometimes I wish I had. It's created by Massachusetts educators, particularly the next generation. That's a shift that they really wanted educator voice in this, and they wanted to make sure that the, the test was looking at the twenty-first century skills that we know are so important to teach. Critical thinking abilities, application of knowledge, the ability to make connections between reading and writing. The idea of the next generation MCAS is it's supposed to give a clear signal of readiness for the next grade level. So how, how well are you prepared to move to the next grade level or to move to your career or college than the former MCAS? Designed to be given on computer, which saves all the FedEx trips. We are moving to two thousand nineteen. This year, all of our testing will be on computer. It'll be that way throughout the state, and we have a, a very thorough plan in place to make sure that happens. First given in the spring two thousand seventeen in grades three to eight in English Language Arts and Math, and like I said, it's going to replace all of the old legacy tests in grades three to ten by two thousand nineteen. So what assessments are we looking at here? This is two thousand eighteen. It's a little small, but Intro to Physics, which are, that's our science MCAS. Most of our kids take that, the Intro to Physics in ninth grade, and do well on math. That's the legacy MCAS. Grade ten ELA in math is legacy, and you can, you can see our next generation in the middle school, six seventy, and Science, Technology, and Engineering in two thousand eighteen is still the legacy MCAS. And then you go down and you can see it's, it's the same in fifth grade. It's a legacy MCAS, whereas in Deer Hill, the rest of the tests in three, four, and five, which are in ELA and math, are next generation MCAS. So I'm just going to wait till I get, I'm almost up. When I get to that section, I'll, if, if the committee so, so wants that, I will take them. Computer based, computer-based testing, where are we in terms of computer-based testing? Well, last year, we took, students took computer-based testing in fourth grade, in fifth grade, including science, seventh grade and eighth grade, including science, and this spring, all of our tests will be computer-based. The scoring, and this is very important, that this has shifted, I think, in talking to some parents, both, you know, parents that I know from the district I live in and parents I know from the district that I'm an educator in here. This has caused some confusion. People got very used to what was meant by advanced and proficient, and it's not a parallel. So the, the exceeding expectations statewide is a much harder measure to achieve than was the advanced in the old MCAS. It's part of the rigorous standards. And that really is the same for all of these standards, but you can see, I'm not going to read the descriptors, but that's really what I want you to know from that, is that the exceeding expectations and meeting expectations are not really equitable to advanced and proficient. It's actually much harder. The scoring has changed. So whereas in the legacy MCAS, we looked at two eighty being a perfect score, proficient starting at two four, I mean, going from two four to two fifty-eight and so on, the next generation is in a, it's a five hundred and sixty-point scale. So that's the, that's the highest you can get on the next generation MCAS. That would be in the exceeding expectation category. So just want you to be aware that when you receive your score reports, it's a different scoring system than is the previous legacy MCAS. And these are just some notes about the more rigorous standards. This is right from the PowerPoint that the state provides, all of the assistant superintendents, principals, superintendents, that they, really, it's more, more rigorous than they were for achieving proficiency in the legacy MCAS. It's designed that way on purpose. It's really looking at readiness for the next grade level, and as Superintendent Davis said, and I want to assert this, that scores really should not be comparative for previous years where MCAS legacy tests were given. So you really can't take a look at the advanced on the legacy and the exceeding expectations on the new MCAS and say that they're the same thing. If you do, you're just doing yourself a disservice because they're, they're not the same.
Right. In previous years, we had cohorts. We followed third graders up to, we can't do that right now.
Well, they still, they still measure growth of cohorts.
They're cohorts, but we, we are following third graders to their fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade in high school and seeing the growth in class. We now have to start all over again.
Right. So they, they really, it's a, it's a smaller growth. They do, they do provide us with growth, but it's, it's a, it's a formula they've created, and it's not, I wouldn't hang on to growth as much as I would next year.
Right.
And I think you can really start to see the test measuring the growth apples to apples. But they do give us growth, and I will go over that. So this is what you're receiving as a parent. You receive your score. You can see that, you know, it gives the, the range that your student is achieving in, and this is again right from the PowerPoint. It tells you that, that it's out of a possible five sixty. It also tells you which achievement level your child has reached, and then it gives you information on how, on how you can use these results to help your, your son or daughter. And what it really recommends is that, you know, if, if your son or daughter is not achieving, that you meet with the school and that you talk with educators to make sure that you know what your son or daughter needs to work on and that you can reinforce that at home. So it just opens up that dialogue. And this is again, where they're showing you, this is a typical one for next generation English Language Arts, and this is in eighth grade, where they're showing where, where the student falls. In this particular case, it's partially meeting expectations, and the colored bar shows you that. And then it breaks it, this is hard to read, I, I will grant you that, but what it does is it breaks down, this is in math. It breaks down, these are called domains, and it tells you where your student performed in the domain and how well they did. So this actually gives you a very specific indicator on where your student has fallen short in some cases or achieving, and gives you a sense of how you can help your student. So it's very much designed to give the parent information to help your own son or daughter. At the end of this presentation, there's a link, and this one we post on the website of course, there's a link for parent information that will give you a lot more information. Okay? And then, again, just let you kind of get this idea that we're not supposed to compare legacy standards. I guess I'm making this really clear, so I'm not going to, I didn't catch it, I said this like three other times, so I will, I will move on from that. So at this point, I will take some questions on just the overarching new MCAS format. Yes?
Now, should we compare results in Seattle?
Good day. Please don't.
Anyone else?
So, early on, it was, it was next generation and legacy, so are they not all next generation? So it's something...
So they are now.
Okay, so some was still the old?
Yeah. So if I go back, this slide showed that. Okay?
Yeah.
So this, so we obviously took, you don't have, you don't have a choice to take next generation or legacy. You take what they give you.
Yes.
Now, you had some choice in computer-based testing, and then now they're saying you don't have a choice in that yet. So now we're moving into all next generation testing.
Okay. So testing this year will all be next gen?
It'll be all be next gen.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay, so on, I have a sixth grader, so we got his fifth grade MCAS results, and he's, he's kind of a bright kid, looking a little nerdy, not like my other two. He might have an AP here.
This is recorded.
It's okay.
He's watching.
They're not watching. So I was a little, we thought his MCAS would have been better, and then I did talk to a girlfriend who teaches fifth grade in Hingham, and her, her results were good. So I don't know if we, do we look at Hingham's results at all? I know they're not really in our little catch group.
So for you, Mrs. Gillis, I put them on the slides. They are, they are on the slides because I wanted to make sure. I put Hingham and Situ on the slides.
Oh, they are on the slide? Okay.
And again, Hingham, like Cohasset, we're a very high performing district, so yeah, they are on.
Okay.
I was just being... Okay, so any other questions? For go to the next part?
No.
So this is some statewide results, and again, you can see the blue is exceeding expectations, and they're a very small percentage, and this is, this is the, the grade level. So that's grade three, grade four, grade five. This is in ELA, but you can see it's, you know, nine percent, ten percent, six percent, ten percent, nine, very small percentage, certainly smaller than in the legacy MCAS when we're looking at, you know, advanced. You know, we get a much bigger percentage statewide, just so you know how hard that is to get. So I just want to say this because many parents are at home looking and saying, geez, my son or daughter was advanced previously, and now they're just meeting expectations. Well, the standards are higher. That's really what you need to know from that. This is how the state performed two thousand seventeen to eighteen. So you can see that in ELA... So you can see that in ELA, there was really an increase in the scaled score in everything, with the exception of grade seven ELA. I'm not really sure why, but these are things that the state will look at, the test makers will look at to decide if indeed that test was appropriately balanced to what the standards are telling, you know, are saying we should be teaching. Because remember, at the heart of the MCAS, it's a test about standards. They've set the standards, the educators have set the standards. And it's set to look at how we're doing, meeting the standards with our curriculum. And the end result is what happens in 10th grade. And there's still some growth to happen between 10th and 12th grade. So if our students are meeting the standards, it still helps them meet those standards. So that's the idea.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry to interrupt you, but it's interesting that you're saying that there are higher standards this year. Obviously, this is MCAS, so it's Massachusetts. How does it align with the Common Core? Because this week in the Patriot Ledger, which is within local, there was an article about college acceptances and kids' inability. Everybody gets an A, so they go, the perception is everybody gets an A, you know, in, in school. And then they go on to college and they don't understand why they're not doing well or why they're not getting accepted into the colleges that they want to get accepted into.
So why they're not getting accepted or why they're not doing well?
Both.
Okay.
Both. But it's interesting to note that Massachusetts is making our standards more rigorous.
Right.
So it was just a commentary on that for anybody who might have seen that article. I meant to cut it out and send it to you and I forgot.
No, I'd love to see that.
I will, I'll resurrect it.
I think, I think the standards are definitely higher in terms of MCAS because they're targeting those skills we know are so important. So it's really, it's striving to be a test that is, is really in tune with what the Common Core is asking. You know, you hope that colleges are also looking at these important skills as well and that their teaching is aligned with that.
And it kind of leads to the whole, Ellen has been watching SAT scores and where they are. And it spoke to that in the article too, that...
Well, the SAT itself is moving more towards...
It's changing.
Changing to this type of testing as well in terms of their, you know, it's no longer as much of a content test as it is a skill test. So they're pushing in that direction.
Well, people are upset because colleges are not looking at SAT scores as carefully as they used to. Let's just say.
Well, I mean, I guess I'm a fan of that. Because I'd like them to look at the whole kid.
Absolutely.
So I'm, that actually is music to my ears. Not to say we devalue it, I just want to make sure. So anyway, just to move a little more quickly through these. These are just some trends in the subjects. So you can see this is, ELA is on the top. You can see how it's been trending over the years from 2007 to 2018. You can see mathematics trending and how science is trending in 10th grade. Science is definitely trending up, maybe plateauing a little bit here. In grade five and eight, science and technology, you can see that there's, you know, kind of a dip now where I think the next generation's, science standards are kicking in. I think schools are struggling to handle the spiraling of it. I think we're, we're finding a push and pull with that. You know, some of the data in this, in this presentation will definitely show that we need to do some work in that regard. And we are, we're really looking at it. You can see a real dip at the end here. Yep.
The biggest change in science right now is an adjustment to the learning of science. It used to be hypotheses, check it, know it. Now it's much more hands-on discovery.
It's very much, it's very much inquiry-based.
Yeah.
And it's very much hands-on discovery.
That's difficult for our students who want to give us what we ask for. Now they have to be more...
And as we pursue project-based learning, as you've heard many, many times, that's when our scores should, should be moving up. So that's a, yeah. I do want to stick to my, if I don't, we're going to be here till...
Yeah, yeah, no, but just quickly, you said that the standards and curriculum have changed to next gen, but it's still the MCAS test.
Yes.
So that, that's kind of why it's down as well.
Yeah, okay.
I just wanted to make, I understood that.
So it's, that, that's, that in itself, the changing standards and the test not matching it necessarily could be accounting for some of the dip.
Right, it's like they want to teach you French, but you're going to test in Spanish.
Remember, what this is saying, you can see, that's a thirty-five. So what that's saying is that the state, on an average, is scoring thirty-five percent meeting expectations or exceeding expectations. If you gave a test to kids and you said, well, what is your average for achieving? And you said it's thirty-five, that would be problematic. Right, if I was, if I was trying to help a teacher with that, I'd say, you might want to look at your test. So I just want to keep that in mind as we go through it. So these are how we're, how we're achieving in a nutshell to the state. And you can see, with the exception of one score here, we're really looking way above the state in many cases. And again, our state is the highest achieving state in the country. And if we looked at our state as a, as a, as a country, we would be fourth in the world. So I just want to, I want to bring that up. It's a really, really high performing state. But you can see, I'm not going to read them, but you, and I mean, you'll see this as we go because the state's on all the, all the graphs. But, you know, we're, we're certainly achieving. And this is, this is always the end result, which is very, very impressive. And you'll see that these scores, which to me are my three favorite slides in this, when we get to the end result, it's at the top of the cohort. And that to me, if you look at the test as a, as a, as a way to change our curriculum throughout the years, culminating in that high school experience, I would say we're doing a really big job compared to our cohort. Now, you're going to see places where we, we see growth. But I just want to keep that in mind because the, the end result is very good. MCAS growth, this is typically, and again, I think Superintendent Davis did a nice job of saying that this growth is a little funky. I'm really not feeling comfortable with it until we get to next year. There are some trends here. You can see our, our math growth, for instance, in some of these areas in middle school is not very high. It was higher last year. I went back and looked at it, so I don't know if I could have a, have a trend there. And you can see some solid growth. Let me look at our growth in our 10th grade subjects, very, very strong. You're not going to get growth in science because it's not consecutive. It's, you know, you adjusted it fifth and eighth and we do it ninth. So you're not going to see growth because you don't have a like cohort. And these are students who have been grouped in like cohorts. So basically, if you, if you compare, it's trying to compare apples to apples because it's a student who achieved at a certain level in one grade and then the very next grade, then they get in a cohort, it's a two-year cohort. And then they're compared with that cohort moving forward. So it's trying to measure the growth against students who are performing at a like level. If that makes sense. So here we go. So now I want to mention the schools who are in our cohort, although Hingham's not, but I put it in there. We have Situate, Hingham's, like, because they're local schools who we do. And then the rest of them are in our cohort. Harvard, Georgetown, Noel, Middle, Manchester, Essex, Hamilton, Wyndham. And, you know, I mean, I just want to put a little plug in for all these communities. You look, these are the communities people want to go to because they did well. So this is great...
And can you just, I'm sorry, can you just explain for the audience how the cohorts come out of the dark?
Yeah, they look at socioeconomics, they look at size. And then there are a couple of, there are a couple of other measures.
Enrollment kind of thing.
Enrollment.
Yeah, and it's, it's pulled out of DESI. It's DESI who's doing it.
Yes, I'm sorry, it's, it, that's...
It's not us.
I was thinking very, we're not creating cohorts. DESI creates the cohorts. And they, they basically are saying, if you really want to compare yourself to schools, let's compare yourself to like communities. Not that these communities are exactly alike, but from DESI's point of view, they are. So this is, and I also want to point out that these are very small differences. So you'll see that throughout. And in some cases, you know, they're exactly the same. So like, these two are exactly the same. So it's, they need to compare that. I just wanted to show you how we're doing. This is grade three ELA MCAS. And as I'll do throughout this, our, you know, what were our strengths? And these are those domains. Our language anchor standards, vocabulary acquisition, use of knowledge of language was very high. Reading anchor standards, which are key ideas and details. The presenters today talked a lot about how we're building towards these. And some of our areas for growth, and I'm just going to say that, remember, all of the domains in this area were well above the state. So what I'm doing is I'm looking at, they give you a comparison to the state and I'm looking at the scores that are nearest to the state. So if there's any place where we might be able to pick up some ground here, it's in writing. And it's really essay writing, test type, that type of thing in third grade. Grade three math, again, very similar scores going through this. That's meeting and exceeding expectations. Keep in mind, this is the state, states at the, yeah, states at the end of all these. Strengths, geometry, we scored very high in geometry. And this was just some specific indicators that we scored very high in. And you can see this is solving problems involving measurement and time, involving these masses, that type of thing.
I can't do that.
Well, I'll ping in, I'll ping in the crew again, they'll get their method. Solve problems involving the four operations, identify and explain patterns in arithmetic. Those are all domains or categories under the domains that we did very well in. This one, it's not that we struggled, we just didn't do as well in some of the other areas as we did in some of the other areas. Understanding the process of multiplication and the relationship between multiplication and division. That is a big thing in third grade. And it's a, it's a place where I think the whole state, you really, as I think about a third grader, that's the biggest thing in third grade for me in terms of math, is that one.
It used to be in sixth grade that they...
I know, that's another thing. Yeah, I know, having gone through that with my third and fourth grader and looking at my life and feeling guilty that the assistant superintendent needs to work with that sometimes. I'll tell you, but, all right, so grade four ELA, very, very strong score. You know, right at the top of our cohort. Strengths, again, all the language anchor standards, all the writing standards, specifically essay writing. We were, we were at a very high level in essay writing compared to the state, compared to everybody really. Our constructive response, and again, all of the domains above the state average. Although results were, and I honestly, they did so well, I had to like, this is all I can say. Although results were very strong, working on all skills is a good action plan. And I'm not to say that there isn't room for improvement, but this particular grade four ELA category was very, very strong. Grade four math, again, I want to point out that the differences are pretty small. But that's where we are in our cohort. Number and operations and fractions is very strong. Extending the understanding of fraction equivalence, this is all fourth grade to get into those fractions. All domains, again, above the state average, so I'm splitting hairs a little bit. But solving problems involving measurements, conversion of measurement from a larger unit to a smaller unit, decimal notation for fractions, gain familiarity with factors and multiples. So just know that I've worked with either the principals and all the department heads to do a thorough analysis and Chrissy Thuney, the math specialist, and our reading specialists to really look at this data and to make sure that our curriculum is being, instruction is being adjusted appropriately. So this isn't coming just from me. Grade five ELA MCAS, see where we are. Strengths, again, essay writing, very, very strong essay writing scores. All domains above the state average. Language anchor standard, conventions of standard English. And again, they're very strong scores. Grade five math MCAS. Measurement and data, converting like measurement units, that was something that came up earlier. All domains, again, above the state average. Geometric measurement is an opportunity for growth. You start to see, and I've talked to the U.S. City Moving into the middle school, the geometry being something that we want to make sure we dive into and help with. Particularly, you'll see in the, in the math scores coming up. And I've talked to Mr. Ford about that and we do have some plans for it. Graph points on the coordinate plane to solve real-world problems and mathematical problems. A domain that was not really emphasized necessarily on previous legacy tests. It's a big thing now. This is our grade five science and tech. And again, you saw the trend going down in the, in the, and, you know, it certainly is something to attend to here. Biological evolution, unity and diversity was a big, was a big one. Again, we're above the state on all domains. Physical science, physical science was something that we could, we could dive into and improve. We do have an engineer working and advising our teachers. And particularly, as she gets into instruction now with them, as opposed to last year where Dr. Jennifer Love was really, I guess she's just Jennifer Love, Professor Jennifer Love, was really unraveling the standards with the teams. Now she's really working on some of the instruction. It's going to, it's going to pay off. Grade six ELA, see where we are. Your eyes have kind of adjusted, so some of them have kind of... Very balanced, it really, it was hard to pick one standard out that was low. Language and reading standards were very high. And our writing anchor standards, it was really quite a bit ahead of the state, but it was the lowest that I could pick out. So we're looking at it. Grade six math. Again, all domains are above the state average. Strengths in the number system, ratio and proportional relationships and statistics and probability were the lowest of the, of the standards and some opportunities for growth. And I talked to Mr. Fortin, who really was saying, those aren't really stressed in sixth grade. You'll actually see them as strengths later, but just something to consider. At least we know that we're falling short in that. Grade seven ELA MCAS, remember, this is the one area in the state going down. So the whole state struggled with this. We held our own, we didn't achieve like we had in some other grades, but we still did very well. All domains above the state average, it was very balanced. Language anchor standards, our reading anchor standards and our writing anchor standards were a little bit lower on this one. Math MCAS, again, right, right in the middle here. You can see this really very similar to the sixth grade. You had the number system as a strength. Geometry, you'll start to see geometry kind of getting in here as a, as a weakness. I know in the seventh grade, having been a middle school principal, this was the vein in my existence, was trying to get geometry, geometry to be something that the teachers had the time to really address. And we found creative ways to do it in my previous district. But I know that it's, the way it's kind of working is that they're really hitting geometry later and they're working geometry at the end of the year more in seventh grade. So I think that might just be a bit of an adjustment, dipping back in to get it a little earlier in the year before the test is given. I think that's really what it comes down to. Grade eight ELA MCAS, very strong, very, very strong here. You can see the strengths there, very high performance all around. All the domains well above the state. Writing and language were especially high. And there's nothing to do here except just give it an overall approach to try to improve it. There's nothing to jump down and say, that you need to work on, let's just continue our approach and it'll be, it'll be okay. Grade eight math. So this was the one, I couldn't put that all domains are above because geometry wasn't. So that's something that we have to look at. Geometry was the only one that was just equal with the state. Geometry and the number system, our opportunities for growth. This was our lowest, this was the eighth grade science that I talked about, us really diving into our curriculum and looking at how we're spiraling our middle school curriculum so our students can achieve any great science. And I'll get to that in a minute. And you can see that all three of the sciences, we could have done better on in this particular area. Our technology and engineering standards were very strong, very strong going through. All right, so now, this is the end result. And I think these are very important graphs that, you know, Coasette is achieving higher than anybody in the cohort at the end of 10th grade with your ELA MCAS. I think that's, you know, there's so much great teaching happening. And if we're really looking at the MCAS telling a story to get our kids to 10th grade and then to help them get beyond that, to move to colleges, this is the end of the story and it's a happy ending because it shows us achieving very high compared to our cohort. And you can see, I mean, we're amongst the highest in the state on that. Our performance on the language and reading standards, very strong. Balanced, high performance, all domains way above the state and balanced and high performance. Continued overall approach to just keep going with it. Similarly, in math, I think this is a happy ending to the story as well. We're higher than, than everybody on that chart. Same idea. Again, I'm splitting hairs with the number system. You can even see it was, it was mentioned on the strengths in some other areas. Those are our strengths and some of our opportunities. we've got. And our intro to physics, we made some curriculum adjustments recently, in the last two years, and they've paid off. And we really have the same, we're equal with Dexter here, further across, but some very high scores at the end of all three of our major subjects, our core subjects that are, that are looked at in that test. Maybe conservation of energy of momentum. So this is just, I know I'm not supposed to do this, but I just wanted to show that, you know, there's growth here, and these are the, the grade levels within a two-year period, so you can kind of see how the individual grades are doing with their kids. These are different kids, but you get a sense for, you know, their, their type of, and there's some growth to be seen there. Same thing with math, just wanted you to see this, you get a sense for, you know, the ebbs and flows. These are by class, two years, you can see some definite growth and some room for improvement Math, very consistent around. So now, our high needs group. So our high needs group is an unduplicated count of all students in the following groups, students with disabilities, English language learners, ooh, sorry, four, four English language learners, or low-income students. And for us, this really equates to special education, because we don't have many, many cohorts other than that in this particular group. And now I want to, want to make sure you pay attention to the ends, to the ends alone. And just as we looked at the ends when we talked about ACT, it's not, you know, it's hard to really draw grand conclusions, although this does paint a picture that, you know, there's some work to be done here, and really looking at how the students do. But there's certainly some good moments in this as well. And this is in high school. Let's see, all three well above, well above the state. Okay, so now I'll take, as I said, I'll take some questions on math. There's a lot there.
This is Mark. You talked about Patrick and the areas that, you know, you have some work to do and you gotta look at curriculum, like geometry is being taught at the end of the year, and maybe this is too simplistic, but would you maybe not tap into some of the districts who did well, like Norwell, and hang them and say?
Yeah.
What's your cadence in, in, in instruction and?
Yep.
You know, so you don't have to reinvent the wheel, because?
Yeah, we have a linehouse group where we certainly can talk, talk about those things.
Yeah.
And yes, yes, quite frankly, absolutely, we can learn a lot from each other of sharing ideas, and you know, we did that with our middle school group, bringing to, to middle school, so, yeah, that's a great, great approach, and I think they could get a lot from us as well.
Right.
As you can see.
Right.
Yes.
So I, I love your presentation, and I love the way you said you had it organized, so this is what we're gonna work on. And it's great that you can, you can pinpoint individual categories. I'm thinking of the middle school a lot, and sometimes that's great to pinpoint, you know, what you need to work on. I'm hoping, and maybe you'll talk about this, that as we're thinking about the middle school, what's really important is that teachers have time to collaborate, we're, we're sort of looking at the middle school and, and because the piece of really getting those things right requires, you know, time and planning.
Yes.
And I hope that as we're thinking about the middle school and thinking about the organization of the middle school, that that time and planning that is so crucial, especially as the standards change.
Yes.
Is, is gonna make the huge difference. It's not the nitpicky little questions so much as organizing the teachers and the, and the time. So I hope as we're looking at the middle school, we can consider that and think about, you know, what is the time on learning for math and science? And how can we look at that? I know there were conversations about even the grouping, and maybe we need to rethink that.
Absolutely.
And the other thing that I notice coming through in these new standards is this idea of real-world problems, which really goes well with our project-based learning.
It does.
So I'm, I'm excited about that.
I am too, and so, and what Ms. Van is talking about is our, our project-based learning, we have a lot of very important initiatives happening at our middle school, where we're having collaborative teams work together in subjects around particular areas, and looking at authentic audience, real-world issues, and looking at even global, global awareness with that. So all of those skills that we talked about as being germane to the next generation are our approach to project-based learning. So I think your points are right on, and yeah, that we are looking at all those in our, in our, in what we're doing, how we're gonna structure our teams to make sure we can have those collaborative discussions, so, that's good.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, I?
No, sorry, name and address.
Oh, Tracy.
For scale of spawn, I could use a little more.
Thank you.
It's pinpointed down to the point where you could almost, you know, the fifth grade MCAS, the math and the science, I was just really frustrated and unhappy with. So you can almost pinpoint, and obviously, I, I, so you're seventh, eighth, we've got some problems, I think we can pinpoint this down to some of the staff.
Yeah, so I, I, I don't, I don't know, I wouldn't say that. I would say that I think we have such a high qual, I mean, I don't wanna interrupt you if you want to keep going.
Yes. I, I know that my child got up here to sixth grade and just said, and he, and his peers, you know, he said, and I go on to hear it a lot at, at Deer Hill, he just said, you know, a lot of the kids said they didn't feel that their math was, the teacher or the teaching style was strong, and that that, you know, they, and they weren't surprised, and, you know, now they're getting up here, they, you know, some of them are gonna have Mr. Fortin and all this. I think we've got some spots in there where we could look at some teaching styles that may not be as successful that, you know, if we go through this, I mean.
Yeah, well, so, I mean, I would, first of all, I just want to say our staff and having, that is so high quality.
Absolutely, absolutely.
What, what I would think we could do is we could pool our resources to make sure that our approach for everyone is being supported. So as it was suggested, you know, looking at other schools who are doing it well, as a teacher who was, you know, as teachers were always our own cautious critic, but as we, I, when there were times my scores weren't so great, I would look at another teacher whose scores might be better. We'd work together to see if there's something that we can collaborate on, or something I can learn from that person, and, and then we'd hear is when I did better and that person would talk, so, to create those data dialogues are really important, and those, those things are happening. Some of the frustration is that you, when you look at, all this is from standards analysis, you can also look at the item analysis, but the items aren't all released, so it gets really hard to pinpoint exactly what items the students did do well on.
Like just at the bottom, just giving the ones that he didn't get crap, and?
But you don't, you don't always get the test to know what that was.
Exactly, exactly.
So it's really hard and frustrating as a teacher to know that, you know, you see a standard that's slow, and you want to dig into those items and say, what could I do better to make sure that I'm hitting that standard? What, what didn't, was it a reading of the question problem? You know, because sometimes you gotta look at that, did they understand the question? And maybe they knew the content, but they couldn't, they couldn't read the question properly, that's a skill as well. So it's really hard for a teacher, and that is a mark against the test, is that we're not getting that information to really be able to dive deeply into that. But, so I would say that we can learn from each other, and because we have such a high quality staff, that's great, because that gives us an opportunity to grow.
Patrick's been having some very meaningful conversations as well with Christina Sonae and the staff at the Deer Hill and the Osford about?
Yes.
What do we see and what trends do we see?
Yes.
And as far as the budget concerns, are, are we supporting them enough? So it's not, it's on our radar that they, and we've also had some very fruitful discussions about the connections between music, STEM, and math.
Oh, yeah.
And how the integration of subjects is very important, particularly at the middle and high school, where some of it develops. So they've been very, very rich discussions.
They have. And to keep going, as we're looking at, you know, ELA this year, and you can hear from our conversations, next year in the cycle is math and science. So really digging into these, these issues vertically, you know, creating control and looking at how we're growing. One of the things that I've been working with Christine Sonae on, and she's been, she's amazing, is gathering data, and even looking at our diagnostic, the same thing with Mr. Ford, looking at our diagnostic tools, like, do we, are we actually using measures that give us the data? So, because that needs to happen as well. So all of this is really being looked at, including Envision, and what is Envision doing for us? That needs to be in the, in the conversation, you know, and how that is. So that, that's how, yeah, you need to review that, you know, the cap has the decisions, but all those things are going into it.
Ellen, you have a question?
Well, I just, I just wanted to comment that every teacher gets their student's results, and I recall from, maybe it was two years ago, when Sue Skieber was presenting, she said, and I think it was math, and the middle school teachers, like, like there was, one of the domains was not as strong as it should have been. And they said, it, when they really did the deep dive into it, what they said was, was how we asked the questions in class compared to how the questions are asked on the test.
Yeah, yeah.
And it was a vocabulary issue in math, and once they made those adjustments, the scores were better. So they do look at all of the data that they get and adjust their teaching styles.
So also, you try not to have this, but there's a computer-based testing element involved with this as well.
Right.
Particularly, I would say, in math, that you're, as, you know, you're, the way you're solving problems on paper.
Right.
And then you're, you're solving problems on the computer, so there needs to be significant practice with that.
Right.
To be able to, to be, you don't wanna, why, why I say it begrudgingly is because we're, we're working on standards and skills, we're not looking for test takers.
Right, right.
Professional test takers, but as long as we're looking at results, that is an element, just as understanding the question is. Other questions on this, and I'll move to accountability? Okay, right. So this, these are clearly, you know, from, from the state presentation, but this is a definition of what accountability is. An accountability system, I'll be different, is the set of policies and practices that a state uses to measure and hold schools and districts responsible for raising student achievement for all students, and to prompt and support improvement where necessary. So that's what they're defining that accountability as. Every school is responsible for the performance of all the students, they should be. The accountability system identifies areas for improvement, and every school is rated based on specific indicators, and there's been some additional indicators added this particular year. So here they are, okay? So we've always had some of these. Achievement, so they're looking at achievement in the ELA, math, and science, these are school-wide accountability indicators. Student growth in ELA and math, that's your student group percentile, which I reviewed earlier. High school completion, the four-year cohort graduation rate, the extended engagement rate, okay, how many students are continuing their education, and the annual dropout rate, which doesn't hit us too hard, but not even a factor, but it is in many cases.
Every ten years?
Extending at the secondary level or postgraduate?
I believe it's at postgraduate.
Okay.
Oh.
Hey, it's not like going, it's not like being on a five-year plan in high school.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
English language proficiency, that's progress made by students, sorry, I'm still a little lazy, sorry about that. Progress made by students towards attaining English language proficiency. So this is, this is something that they've, they've, they've been, is to really look at your EL population, we have a, non-existent, a very small EL population, but for many districts, that's a huge indicator, it is impacting their accountability. And, but something they need to attend to, because it's in their population, and we certainly do as well. Additional indicators, chronic absenteeism, they're looking at absenteeism in, in schools, and then the percentage of students completing advanced coursework, same idea. Participation required by all students, all subgroups, all subjects.
And if I could insert a little bit, on the discussion with the data person on the state level, when they talk about chronic absenteeism, they also account for students who are just not present for any reason. So it could very well be, if we have students who are homeschooled for a period of time prematurely, they're not absent for us, but they are for them. It's a very strange system, and according to the state, they're starting to look at that and saying, is that a fair system? So they're still tweaking it too.
They, they really are.
Our EL population is so tiny that other districts are given 10% or 10 points for that.
Yeah.
We don't qualify, so we get zero. It, it's not a good?
It's not impacting our accountability right now.
They really need to tweak it.
Also, they're, this is an interesting one, they're also looking at the lowest 25% of your performing population, and that is no, that is from, that's just the, the kids who score the lowest, and they're looking at how they're growing. I actually really like that, because that's holding, holding districts accountable to help out those really struggling kids. So that, that, that's gonna be measured in accountability too. Yes?
Are those kids that are in the high need group, are they on IEPs? Is that 25% of your kids not on IEPs?
It's just your lowest performing kids.
The lowest, okay.
Across the board.
Just based on the task, the little?
Crosses all sides, see, that's what it is, it's your lowest performing kids, no matter what there's, you know, they're, what, where they're grouped. How do we, so this is, the, the two major components of accountability comes down to this. How do we compare to others, okay? The higher your percent, your percentile, the better your doing compared to other districts, so the higher you, these are, that's what I'm looking at. How do we compare to ourselves? So this is where, you know, it's, these are very important indicators. All indicators are considered, all indicators are weighted, what did you said? All students are considered and weighted for all indicators, all students, subgroups are considered and weighted for all indicators, high needs, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, English language learners, and your lowest 25%. That equates to the new accountability system. So how do we come out? Well, we, we missed some of our growth, and we missed some of our achievement targets in various areas. Still, okay, if you look at this, we're still in the, again, 100 is the highest, this is where we're falling. Eighty-third percentile for Deer Hill, and then Cohasset Middle High School, which is looked at as a middle high school. Yes. Not as a high school and a middle school, okay? Some districts have that, if they have a separate middle school and high school, it's separated, and you'll see the accountability for each of them. We get the group accountability, which means that if our high school achieves and our middle school doesn't, or our middle school achieves and our high school doesn't, it's factored in, okay, altogether. And this is, 75% of us due to reading targets, and this is where we are with our, our targets. So we're, we're, we're close, but we did not make it this year to the reading targets. So we're, we're partially reading targets.
And the higher your percentile goes on the left, the tougher it is to meet the target.
Yeah, yes, because it, because your growth, well, you can figure, because your growth percentiles are gonna be harder, because your, your cohort is tighter. Some action steps, okay, where you saw the work that we're doing with the literacy team, so I don't want to talk about that, that nauseam, because they're clearly, there's some really exciting things happening. But lots of professional development support to help our specialists, that's the, you know, the, the reading specialist you saw, the literacy studying team is looking at the MCAS scores, and we're really in the process of a comprehensive ELA curriculum review. It's already brought us a phonics program, and the work we're, we're doing going forward is, is really exciting, and there'll be many presentations coming up about where we are and how we're moving. And that's, I'm excited about this, I think this is, you saw some of the fruits of that just from the lower elementary, not even Deer Hill. Elementary math, I had mentioned this, we're really exploring envision math, we're looking at Dreambox, we're using Dreambox, which is a great resource for all tiers, but specifically for those struggling students, those students who are struggling with math, to give them more intervention work. We've upped the amount of time with our, our math specialist, so that she can provide some interventions, and we're looking at that, you know, moving forward. How can we, you know, with some human capital, maybe help our students a bit more? Elementary science, all teams working with Professor Jennifer Love, fifth grade is in the second year of their adopted team teaching model, which allows the teachers to focus which allows the teachers to focus on two subjects rather than four. And we adopted, and will be, are in the process of receiving training on Discovery Ed Science Tech, which is a really comprehensive science resource for our students, pre-K through five. Some of our action steps, middle high school ELA, you can see them right here. All of the very talented ELA teachers and the department head attended a DESA informational session to, to really make sure they're on the ball with what they need to do. They're all using their, the released items, there are a lot of practice tests happening. They very much jumped on board the analysis challenge here, and I think they're doing some fabulous work. More, here we go, more critique. Looking at some MCAS practice tests, some HAWK writing prompts, using the DESE rubric. It's become, because the questions are really high level, it's, it's a very easy transition into having these in the classroom now. So, you can see that all over this. Some middle school math. We're really looking to, to see what we need to catch. And this is why moving vertically next year as a curriculum view is gonna be really important. As we look at where these gaps are, and we reference that, and using each other, those who are achieving, and the discrepancy maybe in some achievement levels, teacher to teacher, be a little grade level, how can we fill these gaps? I'm really looking forward to that work. We've been using Prodigy and Reflex Student, and we introduced iXL, which is really, it's a program that tracks students' achievement and gives them the ability to practice within school and outside of school as well, to help their... It also helps test-taking on the computer, which I mentioned, which in math, talking to Mr. Ford, he feels has been somewhat of an issue. Science, science is really a full-scale curriculum review. We're really looking at how we're spiraling in our three grades in science. And the, the modifications they made in Intro to Physics have, as you can see, bad statistics. They're proving very effective, so there's a good, good model here. Parent information regarding the MCAS is available right there, it'll be on it. And it's just references, and I, look at that, I said it'd be an hour, and I'm one minute under an hour. Probably not what you wanted me to do. Any further questions?
What's Dreambox?
So, Dreambox is an online, we had this at our, at my previous school. It's fabulous, and the teachers are loving it. They had incredible professional development. It looks at, it gives, really gives students help in numeracy, that's what it's all about. And it's, you know, it's work that they can do at their own achievement level, so it, it bumps them up if they're achieving.
So, it's a computer program?
No, I'm sorry, yeah, it's an online program.
And is it something the kids can do at home?
Yes, you can do Dreambox at home, yeah, absolutely, and they're using it, and I know Elisa gets Carl and some of...
It's entertaining, it's high motivation.
It's great.
Online, available at home and in school.
Huge hit this year, teachers, the feedback I'm getting on it is, this is, this, we need to keep this.
Keeps them very entertained and engaged, challenged. It's been a good program.
Yeah, Kristi and I give absolute credit to Kristi Donae for, and for Alex for really bringing that to Dear Hill. They, they really wanted it, I listen to them, I'm happy others. Anything else?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Patrick doesn't get to sit down because he gets to talk about PD, too.
Patrick, very good.
You can sit down for that as well.
I'll stand up over there. For now, I'll keep my baby, thank you. Yeah, so professional development was, I thought it really worked, it went well. The feedback I'm getting is that it went extremely well. As I, I mentioned it last time, I kinda went off script and told you everything we were doing, so...
Oh, yeah, we...
I don't know, I mean, I'll, just to recap a few of the things. We had Jackie Bryant, who is a constant, a frequent speaker on ACN. She's a health expert, a registered nurse, and just a dynamic speaker. Spoke to the teachers at Osgood and, and the middle high school here, here in the Toron, regarding their own wellness. We had Nina Berkowitz, our, our teacher, and also very, as I think Sven DSSS said in the past, very, very active in helping our students achieve mindfulness, so that they can become... She has a whole group that she meets, but in the mornings, she's a faculty educator anyway. What's that?
She's also doing staff.
Yes, and she did a wonderful job with them at the beginning, like, leading us through a mindful breathing exercise. Jackie Bryant had them absolutely focused on their own wellness. They all had time to create a wellness plan for themselves. And I wanna just make sure you know that this was a plan we've had for a long time. We looked at SEL priorities, and one of them was, we use the metaphor of the oxygen mask on a plane. And if you, if you remember, you hear it all the time, please put the oxygen mask on yourself, people put it on your child. And that's what we're going with, and there's a lot of studies that show teachers who are less stressed have students who are less stressed. So, it's, it's, it's so true. So, we, we gave them wellness time, and, and I'm a very structured person, so I, at one point, I was working with a team, and I'm really trying to structure them, like, what are they doing here? This, this isn't gonna work for them. They need to have, the opportunity to have their own time, but we had some activities for them. So, we, we brought in Cohasset, I was gonna say wrong.
Working dogs.
Cohasset working dogs, Patricia Morse.
Patricia Morse.
Really fabulous group of service, of servicing therapy dogs, the comfort dogs, who came in and worked with our staff, and I tweeted out some pictures of that, I'll put it in my newsletter for PD. That was fabulous, I get really good feedback, they were beautiful animals. And we showed the Mr. Rogers video, which I have, I have no, like, financial stake in this, just so everyone knows. But it was, it's called, Won't She Be My Neighbor? We really, it was, and this was all chosen by the social emotional learning team, which is a district-wide team and a leadership team. The reaction to that as a social emotional learning film was really interesting. It was a very, I think, emotional experience for many of the people in the audience. And we all kinda tied back into the authenticity of that individual. And for me, and I'll speak for me, and I don't even know why I got into education in the first place, which was really to attend to the wellness of kids. And it was, it was a wonderful thing, and a good moment for them. We had a SEL showcase in the afternoon about SEL practices happening with our students in the high school. And Osgood did something in responsive classroom back there. Dear Hill had their responsive classroom overview, which was very successful. And they're, they're chomping at the bit to, I can't wait to talk to them about it, to see how they really felt. But the early, early results were that they, they loved it, and it's really gonna tie into everything that you do there. And it's gonna be a great transition, if it's fully adopted. Even if it isn't fully adopted, for them to know what's going on, and the plan is to do that, but for them to know what's happening at Osgood, the sweep-up, is, is just great, because it allows us to keep that social emotional learning and those behavioral skills that we're trying to, to model going throughout all of our elementary rooms.
So, when you were talking about that, all I could think of in my head was, It's a Wonderful Day in the Neighborhood.
That's it.
Which is the song.
Beautiful Day in the Neighborhood.
Beautiful Day in the Neighborhood, right, right.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good film. And then we had a group of educators, went to Norton Middle School, and I wanna thank Principal Hayward, who is a dynamic individual and a wonderful principal, for hosting our, our sixth grade team. They, they came back with a lot of great ideas and a lot of comparisons, and the, the whole idea of it was to look at what's going on at that middle school and to think how we could, and they saw some things that they like, we, that we do here, and they saw some things that were great there, but the collaborative effort and the spirit of it was great. And Bill Dammey from NELMS, who's the director of NELMS, did our study, company dot root there. And I, that was really, I wanna thank him for that, it was, we have to do that again, so, well, they, they came back with a lot of great ideas. So, it was a really good professional development day, and we have a great one coming up on Friday on digital citizenship that's organized by Sue Skieber, working with her team, the digital learning team. And that should, it's a hyperlink, a hyperlink, hyperdoc, where they're going to be able to dive into some of their feelings around digital citizenship. It's got a lot of resources, and it's gonna lead into the training that happens in January, and then later in March, when we do work on Sammer Model. So, some really exciting things happening in the district.
We are very busy.
There you go.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Not a question, just a, just a comment. I, I wanna, I wanna say it's remarkable to me that since middle of 2016, how integrated the schools are. I mean, previously, sitting, sitting on that side, we never heard about, and, and we never heard about collaboration between Dear Hill and Osgood, and not because it was anything wrong in the buildings, but because it just wasn't thought, there, there wasn't that level of thinking. Or having professional development come from within, you know, it was always outsourced and brought in. But here, here, you've been driving it with a, with a staff, and it seems to be very vibrant and rigorous for the, for the teachers, and it's gotta be evidenced in the classroom if they're energized by it. And I think it's, you talk about educating the whole child, well, we're working as a whole district.
Yep.
On, on everything.
I noticed when they came together the other day that they know each other. It used to be, and, and if you looked out the audience, you have one school, the other school, part of another school, and part of another school. Now, they kinda talk to one another, it's, it's, it's a shift, it's a really nice...
I have to give a lot of credit to the, well, all the credit really to those principals. It's the principal, it's, it's the principals talking, it was Jennifer DiChiara and Lisa, now it's Alex and Lisa.
They said Alex get together.
Remember Alex worked over at Osgood.
Right.
It's almost like one school, like, sometimes you've got, until they do the basketball game. And I've been lucky to play in all the...
That's true.
It really shouldn't be one school, it's just separated by about 800 feet. That's really what it is, it's, it is one school.
But even the crossover, though, from Dear Hill to, to middle school, I mean, you can start to see some of it happening. And having department heads for 612 that are in the middle school, that was, that never happened before, so...
It's got a lot of changes.
Yeah.
Well, and, and to see Jim Willis working with Cheryl Chapman and the crew around there to, to meld those social studies standards is really good.
There are so many...
To be very humble, because they're doing, I'm not asking them to do it, they're asking me to do it.
I also have to give Patrick some credit, because Jennifer Love not only works at Dear Hill, but she runs the middle school.
She's everywhere, yeah, she's helping, while I'm rolling, so I'm looking at her. Makers space up in the, the middle school, so she, yeah, she's definitely, and she's worked with our PBL approach with hidden figures.
Yeah, our consultants have a lot to do with it. Sue will start at the middle high school this Friday, then she'll leave at Dear Hill.
Oh, and having Sue Skieber to, just doing the digital learning work, I mean, with her knowledge is just, she's a mentor for me, and she's just done the amazing job of that.
An exciting time.
That's good.
It brings me back to all the wonderful things that do happen every day in this district.
Yep.
Absolutely, yeah, there, it's, you know, and having spending time in the middle school right now, in the high school. And, you know, parents should know that there are fabulous things happening.
Right.
Kids are happy, the classes are going very well, very smooth. Today was a very smooth day.
That's great.
And it felt good, it felt good, so I just wanna say that.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Thank you.
It's all I have to say about that.
Yeah, well said.
So, next is School Committee appointments and communications, and I just wanted to mention to everyone, our next meeting is the 19th, and Katie Dugan is going to come and present to us on, with an update on the master plan and some changes to their timeline for, for finishing. So, I don't know exactly how that looks yet, but I'm sure we will get all the information at that next meeting. And then next is Special Education Reserve Fund policy update.
Yeah, before we get to that, I just, town, special time meeting is Monday night, the 10th at 7:00 PM. And so, we all go and sit in the front row. So, we don't have anything on the docket other than...
What is that, the seven...
We all sit in the front row, Monday night, 7 o'clock.
Yep.
It's in the gymnasium here.
Okay, so, in last spring, in the spring of 17, we undertook the task to, because of changes in Mass General Law, of changing our Special Education Stabilization Fund to a Special Education Reserve Fund. And we had the objective goals and policies, and policies for transfers in and transfers out. And we approved it, and the Board of Select had approved it. And we just wanna make a few minor changes to the policy. If we vote on it tonight, then we can get it to the selectmen for their approval. The first is on the transfers in, is changing, it previously read that the fund shall be 2% of the annual net school spending. It's actually 2% of the actual annual... She's all right, she's all right. Patty, you can get the door.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Sure, and I'll get there, yeah.
But that's all right. Two plates and 16 stones in her ankle. Yeah, so it's, we just wanna insert the word "actual" into the annual net school spending, which essentially raises our target funding ceiling, because our actual net school spending is much higher than the required net school spending. So, that's a good thing. On transfers out, in the first line, out of district tuitions, these are all the account numbers. Just want to add the account number in red, ending it, oh, they all end in 0062, 313-9200, which is out of district public school tuitions. And then finally, just deleting the paragraph after tutoring services, upon further review, it was found to be not necessary based on the transfer in requirements.
Okay, anybody have any questions, comments?
Michael, is that a fair assessment of what we talked about?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, if there are no questions, I would ask for a motion to approve the Special Education Reserve Fund policy as amended.
So, I'm moved.
Second.
Oh, in favor, let's do a roll call, please.
Hi, Paul Currie.
Hi, Gina Stino.
Hi, Ellen Mark.
Hi, Jen Maddie.
Okay, so we'll have to get this on an agenda with Board of Selectmen at, pro, most definitely after town meeting.
Okay. Not probable, can you just write that down?
Is that one of our goals with that?
Oh, it's this, I didn't bring my goal, my goals, I don't know.
I think it was.
I'm putting the green light, I think, green light.
Chicken.
Well, they have to vote on it.
And does anybody else have anything that they wanna add in the comments section?
Oh, I have just one really quick comment, I just wanna say congratulations. I think we had a middle school robotics team compete this past weekend at Worcester Polytech.
Worcester Polytech, yeah.
Oh, that's great.
Shout out to Mr. Erlinson and Miss Saint, Saint Peters.
Yes.
Right? Gal Saint Peter?
Yes.
Yeah, so I just wanted to recognize the students that participated. I think it's a really fun tournament.
That's great, I would've forgotten that, thank you.
So, thank you.
Very good.
Thanks for bringing that up.
And we have the safety meeting tomorrow night. Safe schools meeting, second meeting, subcommittees formed and...
Yep, excited to go.
Good.
Excellent.
Your working meeting tomorrow.
Yes.
Yes. Excellent, and then we also have a Start School Later meeting scheduled?
Uh, next Monday.
Next Monday.
I believe it's next Thursday. I scheduled it for Monday and said, ooh, special time meeting.
Oh, okay.
It is for one hour to get acquainted, and Blizzard Bag also, so...
When is not, uh, this late school start?
It's Thursday, uh, from 5 to 6.
Oh, it's in the evening, okay.
Five to six is the safety rule, sorry to interrupt, and then it's down to that, right?
No, we scheduled it.
This is next week.
This is next week, not tomorrow.
Oh, it's next week, yeah, yeah. Next Thursday.
Next Thursday, right.
Yep.
It is, um...
Just a little bit. Yeah, it's a lot, a lot...
The 13th, right, it's for the winter concert, 5:30 to 6:30.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
And Blizzard Bag is next Wednesday at 4, and that's more staff right now, so, for the first meeting.
Okay.
Good, moving along.
Could, could we get the literacy study PowerPoint distributed?
I was gonna ask for that, too, thank you for asking.
Because I'm sure Barb's gonna wanna see it. I'd like to go through, I was trying to listen, and then I'd like to go back and look at it.
That's good. That's good.
Okay. The Safe Harbor Coalition team is meeting on Tuesday from 9:30 to 11:30. And we have Budget and Finance a week from tomorrow from 8:30 to 10:30. And Jane, you were right after the fact, because I saw the latest Capitol budget.
Oh, the budget, yeah.
Agenda meeting, they had it originally for schools in January.
Twenty-first.
No, originally was the 12th or the 14th and now it is the 21st.
Now it's the 21st.
Well, presently it's the 21st, we'll we'll see, they have the.
Yeah, it may roll forward.
It may roll forward, it may roll back.
To review our budget.
No.
Request.
Our request, our request, sorry, for our request for, yeah.
Have this meeting tonight and I have a draft, I haven't I haven't looked at it, but there is a draft of a proposal to the Board of Selectmen that they're working on for post-employment benefits, so it'll be interesting to see.
Okay, all right, is there any more business that we need to discuss?
This Mike wants to talk about buses.
No, we're good.
Just kidding.
It's not on the agenda.
No. Okay, so do I have a motion to adjourn at 9:18?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All aye.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Patrick, I'll see you tomorrow.